If you would, I will offer with a prayer on the stand. Father God, we just come to you this morning, thankful for this day, thankful for this opportunity to meet. And Lord, looking forward to the business that we have to come before us. And as we always do, we just seek your guidance and your wisdom. Allow us to be obedient to that, Lord, and to do the best that we can for our friends and neighbors here in Fort Lee County. Lord, we just lift Joe and his family up to you as they say goodbye to a loved one. And Lord, we just are thankful for our loved ones for the time that we have them. And Lord, just pray for comfort and peace on the family. And Lord, as we continue today, we're just grateful for the liberties and freedoms that we joy here in this country that we call the United States of America. We just love you and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes for July eighth. And if you have a chance to review those, I would entertain motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the minute of July eighth is presented.
One second.
Motion in a second to approve the minute of July eighth is presented. I have a further discussion, seeing no favor say on.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, minutes approved. Next order of business will be, I've invited Lauren here from Lane Change. As we all know, Lauren made a presentation before the commission two or three weeks ago on how the opioid funds could be invested here in our community. We had at that meeting approved distributing some funds to Lane Change. And as we often do, we write checks a couple of times a month. And so this morning, I've invited Lauren here to present with that check that we had approved from before. And, you know, from my, from my perspective, if I remember that conversation, I think Lane Change is celebrating its sixth year anniversary. And they have provided a service to our community that probably up until that time maybe had existed, but not in the capacity that it does today. And, and the needs seem to never go away. But Lauren, I hope someday we don't have to present you with a check.
Sure, me too.
The, the problem's gone.
Right.
But we do appreciate Lane Change, we appreciate you and, and the recovery efforts and counseling efforts. And, and so for you and your organization and all volunteers, if you would step.
Sure.
Well, you want to say anything?
When Randy called me, I was blown away by your generosity. The proposal that we put together, to be honest, I wasn't expecting it to be fully funded. And so that just shows us the support that, that you have for the work that we're doing. And so on behalf of myself and the whole organization, including board members and everyone that's involved, including clients, thank you very much for your kind support.
For presenting this. Here, here, here's Lauren. So Lauren, on behalf of the Lee County Commission, but more so on behalf of the greater community and where these funds came from, we're happy to present you with a check for, I believe it's fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. That's what your request was. So thank you for what you do and we appreciate you. And we just ask that you continue to do the great work that you do.
I know.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, before you leave, Lauren.
Yeah.
If you will.
Money and go.
Just the next item, and I'm just going to mention this.
Sure.
We did receive notice that there will be another settlement. We don't know what it looks like yet. But, you know, we have, with that distribution, we've, we've committed almost everything we have for the year. I mean, we maybe have four or five thousand dollars left that we haven't budgeted, okay?
Right.
We have a little seed money left in the, in the, in the account, opioid account. And it'll grow a little bit as distributions come in. But here about a week or 10 days ago, we did receive notice that the Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family settlement will probably be receiving some type of distribution from that. But we won't know, we have to obviously agree to participate or not, and we will. And that will be sometime in September that we get, we receive more details. I just want to give you that information because I think that was part of the discussion we had before was, was the responsible parties that were.
Right.
Yeah, so just want to give you that heads up.
Okay.
All right, thank.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, so with that, just a little bit more, this came in, I didn't date it. But, uh, let's see, we, to participate, we have to return a participation form, which we haven't received yet. Okay, that would be forthcoming. Let's see, there are some highlights. And how to participate when we get that information. It says in the next few weeks, you will receive documentation and instructions from the implementation administrator. In order to participate in settlement, a subdivision must sign and return the required documentation. So when I receive that, I will bring that to a commission meeting so we can formally approve that to participate, if that's the decision of the commission. So that's just a heads up and it kind of tied into our presentation as well, okay? So I will, I will make, I will keep that out and provide more information as I receive. So the, the next item I have, and this is really for open discussion, but I, but I think it's timely. So this is kind of becomes a mini work study session here. But I don't know how else to do that unless we set aside a time for a work study. And I think we have been focused on trying to conduct as much business as possible on Tuesday, not to interfere with other work that needs to be done. And so I want to open it up for discussion and actually maybe start with our current budget and, and really then bring back up the discussion of equipment needs. Because I probably sound like I'm, I'm beaten, beaten this to death. But with lead times typically the way that they are, I felt like, you know, it would, it would be in our best interest and the county's best interest to, to have a discussion on what equipment we may or may not need. I think there's a need for a lot of equipment, so it's really not a need. But, but what equipment will enable us to work more efficiently to, to take care of the daily maintenance that we have and, and maybe some of the equipment that we're starting to see a little wear and tear on. So gentlemen, I just want to open it up and then bring that back to budget before we, before we close. And we don't have to make a decision today.
Right.
But I really think that we need to start to formulate our thoughts together so we do make that, that decision. So I'll just open, open that up. See what you guys think.
Yeah, as far as for myself and stuff, I mean, I, I do believe there is some equipment and stuff out there that is needed to help it be a little bit more efficient and stuff. And I've kind of mentioned it along the way here on a couple of little things. But I've checked into some stuff already, haven't got quite down to the finals of it. But like you say, I mean, it's just kind of an initial process right now. We've got to get something started, but, you know, I'd like to see some type of skid loader, track machine skid loader toward multiple uses there for that, as far as helping out with other places on roads as well with, I believe, trimming more of the trees or right of ways and stuff like that more efficiently. And we can get further back into the, to the right of way, get more of the limbs out of the way where they don't grow back as quick as what we've got right now. That's one piece of equipment for me that I've been kind of checking on. The other piece will be a jetter. Anything to help us clean out the tin whistles and culvers and stuff like that a little bit better. Because I believe that we can do that with less manpower, less time and everything. I think it will end up saving us, I'm going to say twenty-five to thirty-five percent, if not more, of our cost for our pipes and stuff like that each year as well. I think if we're going through and cleaning them, that we don't have to dig them up. And when we dig them up, a lot of time we're damaged, so if we damage, we're using more pipe, more equipment, more time, everything like that. So I've been involved with a little bit of that with a couple of the places. And we took a, I think it was a twenty, twenty or twenty-two foot twelve inch pipe that was three-quarter or better plugged, and within twenty-five minutes, with a two thousand PSI machine, thousand gallon self-contained water tank on it, and within about twenty-two to twenty-five minutes, that pipe was cleaned out completely again and ready to go. So I think that would also be a pretty good purchase there.
Skid steer and limb saw. Kind of look like we might need a dump truck.
On that, and when you say the limb saw, is that the attachment Joe was showing us that fits on the skid steer?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, um, we're, we're July. I know, and I don't know what the status of any of this equipment would be. Joe, do you have a, a source that you have, that you have in mind for? Obviously, we put it out for bid, but do you have a source that could give you an idea on what lead time would be for those two pieces of equipment that you'd like to, to get?
You bet. Yeah, I checked into it a little bit further. I haven't done all of that yet because, you know, as soon as you reach out to some of those, then they just start calling and bugging and everything else, you know?
Yeah.
And especially in today's techno world where they want to give you all these emails and texts and everything else.
Sure.
Because you can hardly get anybody to talk to you without giving that information first.
Well.
So I can reach out and go a little further with this.
Yeah. And see what. You know, I, I think my response would be, we are, we're looking at our twenty-sixth budget. We're doing our diligence by planning now. So what, what we're looking for at the moment is a lead time. And if you would like to have an opportunity to bid, you, you will have that opportunity. And, and then when we put it out for bid, will depend on what we think those lead times might be. So does that kind of gels to, together? You know, if, if it's a short lead time, I would think skid steers are probably a shorter lead time than what we've seen on graders and dump trucks and maybe that jetter. So maybe we wouldn't put those out to bid until December timeframe, right?
Right.
But if they have a longer lead time, maybe we go ahead and get them out there with the understanding that, that we'll have them when, when we're able to budget and, and have them ready to, to, to put to work.
You bet.
And then on the dump truck, generally, what's, what's your thoughts on what we have right now? On what we had purchased probably about three years, three years ago now? So that we start to get that information. And at that time, there was some lead time, but I think maybe they found one or two settings somewhere, maybe? I'm not sure. So again, we may, we may find that they're readily available. And we can, we can put a bid out later in the year or, or not. So the last two we purchased were those internationals, I believe. Overall, we've had probably average maintenance or issues, I think, more so on one than the other. Seems like one has been a little more prone to things breaking. But, but they get a lot of miles on them too.
Rough miles.
Yeah, so, um, any, any thoughts on what you'd like to do there?
Well, I think that our new guy coming in can probably help with that. Quite a bit on dump truck and skid steer.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so when we, when we have our first combined meeting with, with our road and bridge foreman, then this can be one of those topics we'll, we'll bring up at that, that time, okay?
Right.
Something you guys might, just as an added piece of information, Mike can get onto the state bids. So that's a place to resource, to see what's out there that's already been out also.
Right. Yeah. Who all do we already have in this system that we could start getting prices or proposals from? Skid steer, limb saw.
Well, I think to Linda's point, we use either the state bid or what's the other one? It just, I had it was on.
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell. And either one of those, then, um, we, we, we can look at, because they are approved, we can look and see what they, what they offer. And Mike could give us that, that information.
Got you.
Yeah. Sourcewell seems to cover a wider range of, of products, even outside of road and bridge, than what the state bid is. Okay, Eric, you looks like you got something there you want to, want to bring up?
I have.
And then I'll go into, maybe it's a little bit of budget here to look at.
Airline. For the shop. And there's the other one. He says that the cheaper one there has everything that is needed. And if you want to put that off another week.
So, um, that's something that I think we, we, we talked about.
We did.
And I'm going to assume that Northern is already, we've already purchased from Northern. If that is, and that looks like out of those two, that's the low.
Yeah.
Low. I won't call it a bid, but, but the low proposal. But lead time a week, maybe?
Oh, to get all this stuff?
To, to, yeah.
Oh, I don't see.
And then have it here, so we're going to self-perform this, right? Okay. I don't have any issue to go ahead and, you know, get that on the way. That was something that seemed to be a pressing need over there.
Yeah. Yeah, with all the leaks and stuff that's in the line and everything, I mean, to go through and fix it. And there's a lot of fags and joints and everything. I mean, that's, that's going to be the cause of loss for a lot of our pressure, you know? We don't have enough volume to, to carry some of those tools at the other end. So, yeah, I agree, that's something I think needs to be taken care of. So.
Okay, so Chief Budget Officer, Lauren, am I going to? Because that's going to feed into some of our discussion budget. We've got tools and equipment, we've got about fourteen hundred dollars left there.
That's where she'll come from.
Okay, so that's going to pretty much wipe out our, our tools.
Right.
So then the question becomes, you know, like we, the impact, are we, are we going to get by with it for a while then?
Or do you spend it in something that's covered?
And that's going to need to be part of the discussion here too.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe one bite at a time. This is something that we wouldn't normally, this would be something that a road and bridge foreman would say, we need, it's in the budget, and he would get a purchase order from Mike. So I'm not going to entertain a motion on that because we've already approved the budget, the money is there. So what I'd like to do is just get a purchase order if, if this is what we agreed on, and let's get it on the, on the way. And then when we have some time between other repair or rainy day or something that, that we have time to do it, then it's, it's there, ready to, ready to go. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Joe, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Then I want to ask about, looks like we've got an invoice on our grader forty-nine. Is it on the way back or is it back?
Uh, it's not back yet, instead we're waiting for Transit to pick it up and bring it back to us. And so I talked to them, I've actually seen them up at the fair Friday night, I believe it was, Saturday, yeah. Friday night, visited with them and they said they would go ahead and see if they can get that scheduled, see when they can get it back to us. So I should be visiting with them again tomorrow and see if they've got something figured out, the logistics on that.
All right, so, um, before I go into, into the budget here, is there, you know, any, anything else on equipment or anything right now? And then I think this might provide a little mid-year insight. And both of you may have already looked at the same things I have, but I think it's important.
So there is probably something. Concrete tools. I'll perform on that and things that are needed. So this is also tools for road and bridge. I don't know how buts, I don't know what else needed, I'm not a concrete man. I just know that need was expressed. He is getting some prices on stuff that is needed now.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, we've, we have, we have replaced slabs. So I'm going to, I'm going to question, okay? So we've replaced slabs the last two or three or four years, self-performed. First, I've heard that we needed anything different?
Some items may be potentially missing or not able to be found.
Okay.
Okay. Handles, long enough handles, a scrag board, which I don't even know what that is. A broom. Or a finished slab. I'm not a concrete.
Who's, who's?
Rob, Mr. Oneix has noted that the implements are not there for him to finish this job.
Well, as far as for right now, scrag board and stuff like that, they could probably get by. I've done a little bit of concrete work and stuff as well. I can visit with Rob on that and see, you know, for the most part, what I've done on rough stuff, it don't really matter that much is I basically take it and just use another board or two boards and make my own step back to it and get a man on each side of it. And then somebody with another handle or broom in the middle and you attach that and you just kind of work it with three of you, working and shaking at the same time, just reading it up now.
You might reach out to Rob this morning.
You bet.
Like I said, I'm not a concrete.
What are they planning on pouring? Have they got busted out or they?
Yeah, today is.
They saw it on Wedgewood, right?
Yeah. Maybe Wednesday, October Thursday. I don't, you know, I don't think they're going to be anywhere ready. He's wanting to do a single pour on all things.
And that's, that's why I figured, when you said that, I was, I was going to say before a lot of it that I've done, I've actually just done it in sections.
Yeah.
But I can see this, the single pour slab deal like that would be so much better.
He does not.
About the erosion or undermining or the backwash from that, yeah.
He does not want to do it in sections.
Yeah, and I, I'll agree with that, slab.
Yeah.
That type of stuff, because all you're doing is just asking for another joint to come apart.
And I think maybe in the past, we have done it in sections. And we're maybe able to get away with less handles or whatever's needed for these brooms.
Okay, we've, we've got a road closed, we've got a project started. I don't think we're going to fuss over brooms and handles. But, um, but accountability may be something we can direct the road and bridge foreman that pay, pay attention to.
Yes.
Right. Yeah. So something like that's like urgent.
Yeah, it's semi-urgent.
That we're going to pour concrete first of the week?
Maybe this way.
That's what, maybe tomorrow afternoon, Thursday.
So on that one, Eric, did we change the elevation of that at all or did we leave it? We talked about maybe, I think, on one of those.
So it may wind up being a little bit higher, the driving surface anyway, on the big one than it was. But we are not changing the elevation of the standard water flow.
Okay. Putting in bigger pipes, you said?
Two eighteens on the big one.
Okay. And then, um, the, where the road of butts to the bridge? Did we, did we discuss that at all about, when I went out and looked at, at Bobcat, Smith and Company, they, they put like a timber between the bridge and the, and the, where the road.
Beats.
Yeah, have the guys thought about that?
Uh, I don't know.
Because I know a lot on Independence, Joe, and that kind of an issue we have out there a little bit, where we have the, some of the, um.
So the timber takes the.
Mm-hmm.
The pound that's had the concrete.
Mm-hmm. And that was just a takeaway I had when I went out and looked at, at Bobcat. And Jeremy pointed it out and he said he does it on all their, all their bridges. Is, is the slab and a bridge the same thing? Maybe not, but it sounds like the purpose of that timber, if you will, serves a common purpose.
I can see where it could help.
Yeah. If you want to plant that seed with the guys.
I am going to plant that seed also.
Yeah. You know, might be something at some point we go out on Independence and re, and, and revisit that. I haven't heard anything lately, but that was a common concern or call that we would get.
Yeah, we haven't had, had much of that since we done what we done on Independence in Kansas a few months back. And we're trying to keep up with that. And that seems to be working, working really well right now, so.
Keep water off the road, it helps, doesn't it?
Yes, it does, us big time, yes, sir. Mike, I know you're saying maybe tomorrow afternoon or Thursday, just looking at the weather forecast and stuff.
Rain.
Rain, except for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Everything else is fifty, fifty percent plus.
It'll be a working problem.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolute. I just say if they can't have it ready to pour, they will give it, you know, six, eight, 10 hours before any water hits it hopefully. And this time of year, pop ups, the way those scatters are anyway. I mean, there could be no rain in a forecast, you get two inches falling, you know, so.
Definitely don't want that in my metal pour.
Sir, it's a rough. You bet.
Okay, so if we look at the, at the budget and just take a, a, a mid-year snapshot, the Bobcat and Atlanta together, we will go for about a hundred thousand dollars. uh, we will go for about a hundred thousand dollars due to change orders on those projects. If you, if you visit with the engineering company, um, on Atlanta in particular, I think it was about a seventy thousand dollar change order, sixty-nine, seventy-one, something like that, Linda?
Yeah, and I'm gonna call to your question too.
Okay, good, thank, thank you. But, uh, but if, if, uh, if we're unable to, um, put that reimbursement back into the county, so, so first of all, by saying we went over, um, it could just be a timing issue on how we use the funds. We have enough soft match, we won't have hardly any left, but we'll have enough soft match that both of these projects will not, uh, cause us to have to take any, any additional money out of other sources other than, uh, uh, will be fully reimbursed, uh, at, at this point. And I did talk to Jeremy last week, just Jeremy, is there anything else here that, that I, that might happen? And he's kinda assured, assured me at this point, it's, it's unlikely. The cost was, was drilling through the rock, uh, down there on Atlanta. And at first, you know, maybe it's this much on this side and, and, uh, maybe it's that much on the other side and, and so they did have to, um, those pylons or whatever they did, it, it, uh, it did run over and how do you know when you start, you know? So anyway, but, so to Linda's, so what I asked Linda, I said, okay, we're gonna be reimbursed for MODOC for that money. So can we go ahead and put it back into this year's budget? And the answer is, was, was no, but maybe Linda's gonna research that and see. So if the answer remains no, I mean, the money will, will be there for us to work with next year. But if it's not available for us to use this year, then that's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we need to find in the budget somewhere else. And then the other item that we have out there is the brush cutter that's coming in. We have to find probably about eighty thousand dollars for it. It may not be quite that much, but, but eighty thousand dollars there. Okay, and then if you look at the, at the budget, the line items that might carry us would be fuel. Uh, so far, uh, or as of the June report that Mike gave us, we still have two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in fuel. It's interesting to note that this year, and, and, and there's reasons why, we've, uh, through June, we've expended seventy-five thousand. Last year was ninety-six thousand. Uh, so fuel would likely carry us to cover, uh, a great portion of that, okay? Depending on what we're able to do the remainder of the year with the rock. Rock, we're, uh, uh, we're probably not gonna use all that based upon where we've been at through the first six months. But, uh, but last month we did, we did get a lot of rock on the road. I don't know if that will continue, but with some of these projects we're doing, it's maybe not, not likely. That's gonna bring me up to Kentucky in a minute and see if we're at, fine out there. Then the other thing to keep in mind would be, uh, when you get down to road, road patching, I don't think we've done anything there this year. And, and, uh, Joe, I guess because I, I drive it every day, but we've got, we now are developing three potholes on Normandy. Uh, one there within the first half a mile, there's actually, and it's getting, it's getting, it's getting bigger.
Right.
And then, uh, we've got, uh, some spots then on down that are, uh, so if we're gonna do some road patching, we don't have to do it right away, but, but, uh, if we put a Band-Aid on that one pothole, it may save it for a while.
And that was something that I visited with, with, uh, Mr. Beard on and stuff, and they actually went out and done some. He's old, drove around and did some work and, and things in a few of the other rooms.
Okay.
So eventually he didn't get that one, or that one wasn't-
I, I seen some cold patch that they'd done, but it wasn't a great amount. So I, I don't even know what roads it went on, but, uh, went out there. But de- depending on the flow of work, and if that's something we're gonna continue to do this year, then, uh, that's, that's a possibility as well as, as some funds available. But if we don't do any road patching this year, then, then I think next year it's going, it's going to be a bigger, uh, bigger ticket item.
Yes.
Uh, next year if we don't, we, we don't get it done this year. So that was the other item I've heard. And then if you go back to repairs, um, before the Greater Forty-Nine, and I think there was something else, we're, we're down in, uh, equipment repairs now to, uh, and that's, and this doesn't include the, the dump truck, uh, clutch and it includes something else. Uh, so, but if we take out Greater Forty-Nine, that puts us down to about thirty-five thousand dollars uh, in equipment repair. And again, we probably have line items that can cover that, but, um, but this is just to keep us, you know, kinda, kinda collectively focused, cause I'm sure each of us are looking at it, but, but collectively focused on what we're at repair wise. So with the, with the clutch and the brush cutter repair and, and, uh-
Septane. I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
Death, I thought was gonna be covered on that.
It's gonna help.
Uh, because that's, I think that's why, and, uh, yeah, so let, let me not make a note on that too. Uh, um, anyway, so maybe we're down to, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars there.
A little surprised.
Yeah, with, with everything that, that we're, we're occurring. So I just wanted to kind of, kind of do a, a snapshot, all of us together, look at that and, um, so-
We have our floors that are needing some patching.
And, and then when, when we meet with our road and bridge foreman after they're onboard, then I think we need to obviously have the same discussion with, uh, with, yeah, okay? So, uh, any, any thoughts?
Well, I like your thoughts, I mean, and I do like the fact that you are bringing this up and bringing it to the forefront of my mind. I need your help with that.
Well, we, we get busy, we've got a lot going on and, uh, you know, it's just, it's just kinda vague. Mid-year review, where we're at. Okay, and then the note that, uh, and you triggered it for me. So, uh, I had reached out to Ryan at FEDIC to come down on the, I believe it's the twenty-nine. It'd be one of our regular meetings and, and, uh, him and Matt to introduce themselves to, uh, our road and bridge foreman. And they're gonna stop by the commission just as a formality as well. Uh, we have two graders that are still on schedule. Ryan doesn't see any issue why they won't be here. I think those are scheduled for like the October timeframe. And, uh, and then one thing that, uh, I'm sure that, uh, Matt is, is working on would be, um, how these have to be ready to go back, so, so kinda monitor that.
It's already on the spray.
Okay, because that can, we, if we're not careful, we can really be deemed. And then that's gonna come out of repair as well. You know, the tires have to be fifty percent or more, can't have any broken glass and, and it really tighten down on that. And, and then as part of that, just to get, um, to revisit something that came up maybe from Matt was, if, if we're having death issues and Caterpillar is going to, uh, tighten the screws down on our filters in our tank and things like that, we really need to keep that on our radar and get that taken care of because that can prevent, uh, some of the expense we've had on replacing these filters, um, on, on a, a more frequent basis than typically the service schedule would, uh, would determine. So I think we need to, that to me would be a priority as to, you know, what that looks like.
He has spoken about that. He's been talking to the, quite a bit. Talking about regular testing of the valve.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, then, uh, they're not gonna cover it.
Yeah, maybe something is, I mean, I don't know what they're testing for there and everything, I've kinda been out on that, but, uh, do we have, I mean, does it take like some type of filter system or something like that on our, our bolt death tank?
Do we have some, I don't know, sure.
Do we, yeah, and what does their test consist of? And do we have some type of guidelines or something to go off of?
I think Matt could speak better to that, just checking out.
Might have to go back over and check and see, just look and visit with Matt a little bit on that and see where we're, you know, we need to know what's, what to look for ourselves and, and anything we can do to, you know, keep it from happening. You know, you know, to get ahead of it would be great. So if it takes a filter system, I don't know, I put, you know, my fuel tanks and stuff or my farm tanks and stuff, I've got filters and stuff on them, yeah, so. That sure does help.
Okay, that's what I had for road, road and bridge, so now we will go to general accounting business.
I had, uh, there again, I think we mentioned on time prior, but I've had a couple of different people reach out, wanting to know if, you know, like on fuel bid deal, I've got another guy reaching out, checking in on a swap salt quote. You know, wanting to take care of our needs for salt for winter time and see if he could get a bid put in on that and when we take those bids. And I tried to look back through some of the others and I didn't really see where we had a-
Yeah, so we, we have quit salt out for bid before. Um, mine, mine Linda, do you remember?
Mine, I can check.
Okay, and one thing you might, uh, look at Joe is our current inventory.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, we had, we had worked, uh, with a special one, uh, or we had some, um, filters or parts or equipment that we no longer had that they could use, so we traded parts for salt. So our current inventory, I think, would be where we would start and then we'd put it out for bid and typically we would get, sometimes no more than one, one bid on that, but-
Right.
But it would go out for bid, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this particular gentleman, uh, and stuff, company said he's not bid it before, so it would be a ban.
Anybody has the same o- opportunity and so-
Absolutely, so at least maybe now we have some comparison with the same ones bid it prior.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm, I'm, I'm all in, the more bids we get, the, the better, so, yeah. And then on fuel, um, we had bid that out, uh, we usually bid that out December timeframe as well. Um, and so that would be the time we'd probably bid that out again, would be, would be December.
Yeah.
And currently it looks like we're using two vendors.
Truly about all I've got of it, just a normal, normal call, which they have seemed to slow down on roads a little bit, you know? We still have a few of our roads and stuff that's always seems to be an issue. You know, whether it's wet or whether it's dry, those still, that same road still seem to have the, have the issue, but they have slowed down. So. I think the guys are doing a pretty decent job for most part out there and take a little better care of it, so.
Okay, um, public comments items listed on the agenda? No, okay. Routine business, Linda, do you have anything for us, right, right here? So are we working, um, there's a couple of invoices, Linda, I think I know about one of them. I don't know why they're here, but, um, are we, are we doing, and I haven't been to Road and Bridge for a couple weeks, are we doing some building maintenance over there? Any, any questions on any of the warrants that were issued and paid? No, Eric, any, any question else?
Do we know what Masio's was for?
So, um, it was a, um, unauthorized expense that communication has taken place numerous times. Um, and it was for a, some type of meeting that was held over in the annex. And, um, so as a matter of county policy, but as it's driven by the constitution, we're not supposed to spend taxpayer money on individual, um, defense occasions, so like what I would use here Joe would be like when we go to, uh, our, uh, regional commissioners training, and if there is any type of, uh, lunch provided, then the association either through our dues or not, or through, um, um, is, has, has, has taken care of that. So like when we go to Mac, when we go to our commissioner training, then our, our annual dues, I guess covers, you know, the expenses of them putting on the meeting, but at county level, we do not have a budget item, um, that we, we say, okay, we will, we will provide meals or snacks at any of these meetings we might have. So like, uh, if, if we would ever host a commissioner regional meeting here, um, you know, that would be taken up by the whole region.
Correct.
Or we could pay individually, um, but not a, a county doing that. So that's what that one's about, and, uh, that discussion can be had again, uh.
Okay, we may wanna have that discussion again and see.
We will have that discussion.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's what I was saying, I would, that should come back up, so.
And I don't know why this one's here, um.
Yeah.
It says molding off, so is that what it is?
Little hang, that's kilns, I seen some kilns on there, some stuff to.
That's my guess.
Same here, from what we talked about with, whatever Matt came in and said something about that, that other paperwork that we got, so. That'll be my guess on that as well, so.
Like visiting with, uh, maintenance to see if we could, if we could take up some of that over there. Um, and, and I think we probably could, so.
Right. Yeah, I'd like to keep this, we're hearing up on top, so we can have that discussion.
So, so why would this would be, I guess I can add in mine.
I think it probably clarification there because some batteries for panty alarms, but.
Okay, anything else?
I believe I have, public comments items not listed on the agenda.
Uh, you guys had mentioned the new road and bridge foreman, has that been finalized?
So, um, we will make that announcement, uh, next week. And, uh, yes, there has been an offer made, a conditional, uh, acceptance, but until we actually have that person onboarded, uh, I think we would prefer to, um, not make a public announcement at this time, but we will, uh, as early as next Monday.
Okay.
And, uh, so, yeah, you know, things can always change at the last minute, and I would rather be one that know that everything's in order and, and, um, than make an announcement and something, something changed that, so.
I'm saying why.
Just never, never know. Okay, I don't know, Linda, do you have any, anything, Dylan? Jack, anything else, any other questions?
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn now.